I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the temperature changes in the last few weeks. We appreciate it. We could use a little rain. Please watch over our friends, family, citizens of our community. Keep them healthy. Please help this board do the best we can on our jobs. In your name we pray. Amen. Reading and approval of minutes from February eighteenth.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by... Your name is...
Weidrich.
Second by Folkerts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approve the agenda, please, any changes or additions? Monty did change some. Motion by Folkerts.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Alright. Agenda is set. Consultation with attorney and engineers. We don't have an engineer here for a report this evening. Monty, anything you want to touch on?
There's no action items to go over. They did get about one quote for that concrete group throughout the different spots in town, so we'll go over that at the next meeting. As I said in the notes, they said it was a pretty good quote, as far as cost.
The one from Winkler?
Yes.
Six A, local raffle permit for Hazen Public School, FBLA.
Give the Dr. Rappel on March twenty-seventh to cover expenses for the state convention.
And then there's also a local raffle permit for the Hazen-Bison trap shooting team.
And again, that is for expenses relating to the program for uniforms, term fees, and for shelves.
It's pretty much self-funded. Yeah.
We'll make a motion to approve those.
Motion by Weidrich to approve both of them. Second by Hack. Discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Hack?
Aye.
Folkerts?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
O'Conner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Six C, street closure request, shop and play vendor show on March twenty-second, coming up quick.
Full disclosure with this one, the shop play vendor show is hosted by my wife's business. So approval of this or that business, that show as a whole. Potentially provide monetary gain for myself, just so there's...
Understand?
Yes, I see.
Okay. Monty, what do we know about the street closure?
Jesse probably has...
You run a campaign for this? Or any chance?
Just basically, they're doing the vendor show here at City Hall, where they're gonna have one food truck out front. So they just wanna basically corner around the truck. They're not actually closing the street. It will still be open to traffic, but just wanted to make everybody aware that it's gonna be there.
Dave, you been notified about this?
No, certainly heard, but we can't supply the coal, it's not a problem.
Yes. Make a motion to approve it?
Motion by Weidrich?
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion? Monty, we need a roll call?
No, you can just do both.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Down to eight A, commercial building permit for James Saylor.
He has purchased these three lots south of the lumberyard, or is in the process of purchasing them. I don't have the actual signed agreement yet, but they are still working on it with Mr. Johnson, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson being out of town for the winter. He intends to put up a forty-eight by seventy-two storage building, whole frame construction steel, similar to this one, when they loaded them.
For his storage, or for...
It'll be for his.
Must be redundant.
Yeah, it'll be running at east-west.
Oh.
This is a total of a hundred and fifty feet wide, with the three lots.
And there's no setbacks, right?
It's in the conversion, so there are no setbacks required.
Do we have any other concerns about Monty?
I have none.
Was it, so the, as far as the approval for the transfer on that side, was that already...
No, I, if you want to approve a contingent on the final copy of the agreement for whatever the transfer.
Okay, we got a motion by Weidrich.
Who's the... America, he is.
Okay.
Second?
Second by Hack. Discussion? Roll call?
Weidrich, aye. Hack?
Aye.
Folkerts?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
O'Conner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Down to reports, nine A, water sewer garbage.
So the trash cans are there. Notice what we're gonna buy, I guess. Buy then, I guess. A ten of ones, Dave, that would...
I think it's ninety-five or whatever, to get a hat hold, to get the good rate.
Yeah, it's line.
Okay, this way, sorry.
Yeah, to get the discount on the shipping, we have to order at least ninety-six. We used to order a hundred and eight at a time, that's where the break in shipping was, but they've actually reduced that number.
Okay.
And they, they've been going pretty quick here.
Yeah, so the real early cans from the get-go are starting to front some breaking out just from age or whatever, or getting pretty close to being halted with new cans. Pretty close to better order.
When was the last time we ordered, Monty? Isn't that like four or five years ago?
It was in nineteen, so five, six years.
Is that actually your cans in there?
Yes, yes.
So then I guess with that, then I move. Move, I guess, that we buy the new cans, and the sum is... Sum is... Sum is seven hundred, or sorry, or what? Seven thousand. Seven thousand. Seven thousand, seven hundred, and... And... And fifty-eight dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Weidrich, or by Stern, sorry.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. That's right. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, no, no, no. Roll call, please.
Stern?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Folkerts?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
O'Conner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Two A, driveway repair quote, water break.
This is relating to the water break on Fourth Avenue southwest, west of the Catholic Church. It ended up taking, we ended up taking out part of the driveway there to figure out where the leak was. So Dave contacted Meisner Contracting for estimate to do the repairs on the driveway, and he came in at twenty-nine, twenty-five. There could be a little difference here depending on repacking that so that everything's decent when they do do the concrete. But as he said, Dave, as far as that goes, if there's anything to make sure he can try and stay close to that.
I know once frost goes out, slitting construction is gonna come back on the street part of it and that, and dig down and start some compaction from the bottom up. So if he brings it all the way to the top, that should change the quote a little bit.
How deep was it there?
Frost?
No, the break.
Right down to the, actually down to the main, and the frost, but all the four foot were better over that.
How deep was the main?
I think it was about five or six, it was about a foot or so lower than the frost.
So was that following the line outside? Is that why it was coming up?
Yep. It followed from the main up, and it came up in the yard, and up through a curb stop, and up by your house, actually, it came up between your garage and driveway.
Around that water leak and stuff, I know it's in the bills and stuff, but it's been... You know, I guess... I guess, about twenty-some, I guess... About twenty-three, I guess, a thousand dollars on that leak repair, is that right?
That is correct. It took them three days to finally locate it. And like Dave said, it was on our side, so it is all our cost.
That's spending, but what do you do?
So then I move, I guess, that we... That we, I guess, you, you, I guess, Meisner. Meisner on this... On this... On this driveway over here, repair.
Motion by Stern?
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion?
Do you wanna have some leeway in there, Casey? Since you did say it could vary some, instead of quoting that right for this, give them a little...
I would think, yeah, this would be the most it would cost, so I mean, if it were coming under...
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, once, once slitting gets done, re-compacting and everything, I would quote that would be less more or less.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Folkerts?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
O'Conner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Alright, I'll be clear. Thank you. Ten B, streets cemetery.
We already started, so we did some cracks in it last week.
We started crack sealing or whatever, so we're concentrating on that, and all the stone removal is pretty much done, I hope, so...
Do we have enough power for the year?
What's that?
Do we have enough power for the year?
We should have. Yeah, their cattle is up and running, and we're getting an early enough start. We're actually out before they are, so maybe we can get quite a bit done before they decide to shut down. Whether it's remaining or not, we're out.
Yeah, those cracks are nice and wide right now.
Yeah.
And then the shop floor, concrete pool, Monty?
Dave, took some pictures. This is by the one door in the shop, you can see how it's settling there and then how it's partially breaking away. And that just... It's, this is dirt.
That's pretty cool. That just showed up just quick this, about a month ago or so.
Really?
We started noticing a little light under the door, and the next thing you know, the extension started dropping, so what's under there, we won't know until we get it cut off or whatever.
A watering week.
Right.
That, that floor's gotta be pretty old, isn't it, Mont?
I would guess mid-eighties when that...
Yeah, that was there when I moved here in eighty-one.
Yeah, maybe even older.
Okay, so we'll get some quotes on that?
Meisner did provide a quote to do a ten by twenty, basically going back ten feet to get past all this other cracking and make sure that we can get everything compacted well. And his quote for that ten by twenty spot is three thousand two hundred dollars.
Winkler did provide one?
We didn't contact him because he's got plenty of work right now. We can, if you prefer.
Not sure, it would be nice to get another eye, another set of eyes on a quote. You know, if it, if he does come in high, just keep everybody honest, I guess. So if we could, I mean, can we afford to table tell next week?
Yeah, yeah, I can contact Winkler.
Okay.
Did Josh by the jet say anything? If we approve, can we go on that right away, or is it still too frost-like?
No, being in the building, he said he could do pretty much right away, or anytime we could lay up that bay and just get equipment out of the way, because it'll have to be shut down for a while till concrete cures and prep work or whatever.
Right.
Okay, let's see what Winkler has to say, too.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think we want to tie up the bay this week with a potential storm coming out this week. And then you guys just threw a lot on the other side. You started it.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Anything else, Dave or Jason? Our equipment held up over the winter?
Yes.
Good, good.
We are gonna be conducting a couple, two, three interviews on Wednesday the twelfth on the open PW position, so... Hopefully have a decision come next week. Actually, the week after, it'll be the next board meeting. It'll be next week, Monday.
We'll actually have one more interview, because I'm ready to quit in time, or when I came in, somebody else had dropped off an application or whatever, so we'll probably have four interviews to do instead of three.
Awesome. I like a variety.
So there is some interest being shown in the positions.
Police, Spire?
Second time you're answering, second meeting in a row.
You don't, don't say anything, so... Fire dance, Spire? Oh, really, okay.
But if I did?
I was kinda feeling that, so... Police, Spire?
I got some run reports from last month for the police department. Officer Byers had eight. Officer Anthony Malberg had twenty-five. I should say sergeant. No, we're...
Supreme commander's time.
Officer Samantha Malberg had thirty-seven, and Chief Wolf had forty-six. We did conduct a couple of interviews just before the meeting, and we have another one to have, because we need him for the police department portfolio. Position, so... Okay, from there, I got nothing on the fire or forestry side.
Jim or Tony, anything you want to add?
It sounds like the pickup is coming along pretty good. A few weeks ago, got the final proof for decals, and so that's good to go. Reached out during my day shifts this last week, so, what, Thursday? Got an email back from Data Supply today, and they've got most of the parts in, they're waiting for the rest of them, which should be there supposedly four-ten, and then they're gonna get rolling. He did tell me that they're gonna, once they start building, they'll send us updates, and he even said that he'll send videos of when, you know, when they get the lights installed, they'll show us how the lights are working, how it looks, how it looks, I mean... Which I tend to believe, because, you know, like I said, I got my, all my information from Deputy Waller from Mercer County, and he got the same stuff. He showed me the videos and everything. I'm expecting the same thing, and I don't really have reason to not believe any of that, because since we've gone with data supply in the last, what, three, four months, I mean, we've got it pretty much taken care of, you know, compared to the almost two years that we went with Catholic. So, in theory, it looks like we might actually have our new vehicle by touch truck time, so that'd be kinda cool.
Would be, agree. Jim?
Just, we got the shotguns, and finally, just reordered a different brand.
Jim did check on those shotguns. Remington factory is shut down right now for some reason, so when we were gonna get those, hard saying. So we did cancel those, and Jim went with a Mossberg shotgun instead.
And then Steve does the weapons over at Hardaway Hanks, and he gave us a deer. And he says that we need ammunition, too, we can buy extra from them, so instead of going out of town.
Perfect, thank you. Myra, HCD?
A few things happening with the SR seventy-one project. The lease has been prepared for that, part of that green space out by the Commerce Center. Wayne is gone this week, so it won't get signed right away, but they continue to work on that. The plane is being built, so it's gonna have to be done in phases, though, because they didn't get the grant they applied for. We had our first clawback on one of the grants that we offered for housing, and there was a little bit of difference in how it was gonna be calculated, but based on the contract, that's how I calculated it, so...
You say clawback?
Yeah.
What is that?
If somebody got twenty-five thousand dollars on one of those houses, or wherever in Hazen... Excuse me, I apologize, I had something to share with you guys. If they didn't live in that house for five years, they have to pay part of that twenty-five thousand dollars back.
Gotcha.
And we got a little over twenty thousand dollars back.
Gotcha, okay.
I'd ask my board if they'll consider doing another grant, but there's some other things going on, so I don't know if they will or not.
So what are these grants for?
If somebody builds a new house in Hazen, we had six twenty-five thousand dollar grants. So when they're closed, like, the only ones that have applied are people building up in the new addition, south of, south, east of Crowsey's, or Buster's. We've had some grants given to people up there. But if they don't live in the house for twenty-five years, and that pays a little bit back, it's pro rata. And this one, unfortunate.
Sounds like I need to sell my place.
No, no, no. I agree, you should.
Only do I get twenty-five...
I only have one left.
Thousand dollars to build it, and I also get three taxes for how many years, you know?
I only have one grant left for guys.
Only, only here in the RZ.
Yeah, right. I've sent out membership notices, and they're coming back in, which is great. The annual meeting is the twenty-sixth, so we'd love it if you guys will come. The other thing that is dear to my heart is the community-based, we're looking at a community-based tech, tech ed program. I don't know if you're familiar, but that fell apart last year. The kids at school tried to build a house, and I think funding fell through, and some other things happened, too. Well, now we're looking at potentially having HCD fund it. I'm not sure if HCD would own a lot, that's kinda not in our... I guess our, that's not part of what we do, but we do, because we did housing not very long ago. Or else we could activate the Housing Authority again. But anyway, we, we would probably have to fund it if we want this to go through, it's just gonna have to happen. And the idea is that then, they, Dan Walzick would consider being a part-time student overseer, four hours a day probably, so they'd have kids come in two-hour increments, either morning or afternoon, whatever they decide on. And the kids would actually be kinda like interns, they'd help build, not just stand around and watch. So then when the house is sold, the profits would go back into the program, we'd get some money back, and it would take a while, I'm sure, to pay that back. But hopefully, we could do that more than once. If Hazen funds it, it's only gonna go toward Hazen, houses that are different than Hazen. I did speak to somebody who's interested in a house that might possibly be built on a lot that Mark also owns, that is south of the school, high school. Is that lot that we kind of got, not alone? So I, I connected with them again, but I will. So that's pretty exciting. We're having a meeting tomorrow, just to start things off. We've invited Monty, because he's such a font of knowledge. We need him. So those are the things that are really big. I think that could be big for Hazen. It's good.
Okay, thank you. Down to correspondence. Behavioral Health Summit sponsorship.
We've been sponsoring this summit for the last several years at the friend level at six hundred dollars. Just wondering if you wanna continue sponsoring this. I know that for a couple of years, I believe, Commissioner Pillar and President O'Conner attended it at one time, and anybody's welcome to. So I guess just basically, if you wanna continue sponsoring this health summit for Energy Country.
What are these hands all about?
They're a vision west.
Yeah, it's Vision West program.
They're a consortium that works with energy-producing counties and cities to, for different trainings and policies and planning, like, all kinds of different stuff for cities and towns. This is geared basically toward mental health summit for the energy area, for the workers, and what can be done to help workers and all those types of...
If anybody's available to go, it's fantastic. It is heavy, too, you know, you're talking about mental health, and, you know, it talks about their kids, or community, or business people, or law enforcement, or fire departments, you know?
Yeah.
Or how they, you know, they know that, the year that Dan and I went, they talked about, they partnered with the hospital for a program, and they helped pay for a program there, so that's... Pretty awesome.
We'll make a motion to approve it at the friend level, as we have in the past.
Motion by Weidrich?
Second.
Second by Folkerts. Discussion? All, uh, roll call.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Folkerts?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
O'Conner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Ten B, Paves Inspection Agreement.
For sanitary sewer inspection, as I indicated in the notes, Jared has some areas that he, that haven't been cleaned, actually. This is not inspection, this is cleaning, proof removal, those types of things. There's some areas that Jared said do need to be addressed. Nice thing is, the pricing has not changed since the previous year, so... And basically, they need decent temperatures to do this, to try to get everything lined up, moving in the spring.
They can have it taken care of. Hey. Hey. Are you off today?
And then it's a bit of a perp or whatever. Depending on what the accident, I don't know.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion? Is he seeing more than roots, Monty, or Casey, have you talked to him at all?
I don't know anything.
Mostly roots, he said, and some of the six-and-eight-inch lines mains.
Are those in... Are those in, and then he did.
Isle area?
No, it's not in any of the area that's gonna be addressed, because some, and then he did want to get into the area in North Star. Where there has been issues along the lines and all, trying to see if they can clean that out. That's only a four-inch line.
So then are we going to, going to, I guess, work on this then? In the spring, is, or?
They usually end up coming later in the summer, more towards fall.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Fokert?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Omenour?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, twelve A. Equalization meeting date. And it sounds like we may have some people attend that, so there's quite a number of letters.
You never know, you know, the letters will go off till tomorrow or Wednesday, but I'm wondering if you want to do it the second Tuesday as we've always done. Which would be the eighth of April at five-thirty or five? So I can send the notices out. April eighth. That would be the second Tuesday.
And I'm, I'm on days, so.
If we can have at least three of you here as well.
I'll be here.
I'll be here too.
Work for me.
Eighth at five-thirty or five?
Casey?
Thirty?
The brother.
Five.
Five.
Five, okay.
April eighth.
About five.
At five P M.
Monty, you want to explain kind of the reason why we do that and what's?
Under North Dakota Century Code, after we've done the sales ratio of the sales over the previous year, we have to equalize them among all the properties. This year, we ended up changing land values because they hadn't been updated in quite a while, so we'll be sending a lot of notices out for an increase. And if, the increase has to be three thousand dollars and ten percent for a property to receive a notice.
And.
And ten percent. So like I said, there will be several notices going out this year. They then have the opportunity to come in and object to the, to the change. We go through it and make sure everything is correct on the property. If changes are warranted, we can make them then. Or they can, if they're not pleased with the decision of this board, they can always take it to the county equalization and ultimately the state board of equalization if they want. But all properties have to be between ninety and one hundred percent of sales from the previous year as far as their value.
Thanks, Monty.
Yep.
All right, um. Takes us down to public comments. Then go down to approval of the bills, please. Monty added a couple?
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Fokert?
Aye.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Omenour?
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.
You were the loudest of yourself.